Okay, let's go ahead and call them in to order. It's Tuesday, May eighth, 2018. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Meds are reports received and filed?
April 2018, clerk fees filed, reported fees, sheriff fees, and then the April 2018 reports for the count of treasure and the count of others.
Commissioner Committee liaison reports.
Got a planning commission meeting tonight. County Republican Senior Night tonight, a couple of scholarships will be presenting out there. So Waste Management District Board meeting tomorrow, council meeting tomorrow night. HBA is tomorrow night. Elias that senior was Thursday morning got a scholarship for them out there too. Chiefs meeting Thursday night. Renegades Coffee Friday morning, Chamber of Coffee Friday morning. Bar Elks Breakfast Friday morning, just on the ship out there. Eastside Business Association is off tomorrow next Friday morning. And then I think about the radio show Friday.
Yeah, John said it was your turn, but it sounds like you're busy.
Yeah, I tell him hate to miss that. I'm out of town.
Okay, I'll see if he wants me again or...
You're the sacrificial one?
I thought I was on Friday Saturday. Okay, cool.
That doesn't work.
I wouldn't listen.
You signed up.
He does something about animal control.
The only thing I got is a meeting with the Ken thing tomorrow.
Got Lions and then we're gonna talk to him about Health Department. Thursday I've got Legends Bank Board meeting, and I've got a Truman Foundation conference call. At four I get to go out and meet with General Dan at the National Guard. Friday's the Renegades. K-Was, I'll see what... If he wants me again or if they want to postpone it a week, but that's all I've got. Okay. Commission comments, bids and contracts. Bid discussions awards 2018-26. Abatement of 2934 Landing Creek.
We lost Mike. Maybe we should even hurry up through that.
Okay. Well, we'll skip to 2018-27 Interior Painting.
Okay, this was on the... back on the agenda for this week. Again, we had three different vendors that bid on the project and we had three different sections. And I know you guys wanted to look at the budget wise and see what you wanted to approve or not approve, so I'm just looking for an award of that bid.
Send you guys that page, but you need to...
Do you have any more information? Have we got any more grants or anything about this?
I don't know yet. I'd be thrilled if it was before we hear some more.
What's your feeling on that? Get some or not?
I think we'll get something, but I don't know how much. I don't think we'll get the whole amount we asked for. That would be great, but I don't think so.
We'll get some from WIC though.
Yes. It all depends, you know, how much they have left over from other, either other counties or other states, how much is available, but I don't think we'll get the whole 143 we asked for.
I think it makes sense to paint the whole thing longer ahead. I didn't, I'm trying to find that email, Chris, I'm sorry. Where did it say we were doing? We're in pretty good shape to get all... No. Well, that's Texas. I expect it's funny now. Wonder if we ought to let them know our first name?
I would say a couple of them are calling this week already or last week, wanting to know, you know, plan out their schedule because they're talking about, you know, one of them said anytime, one of them said the early part of July, but the other one was July to August. So, and I'm not sure how that's gonna coordinate with one week, with the other projects that are going on out there. I'm sure the sooner we let them know that we can get on their schedule, if that makes sense.
So I updated that and just sent that to you again. So if we do all the painting that was in the bid, that was 43,000, takes our total less the grant to 229,000. Keep in mind, those are pretty hard numbers and could be other things that come up too. So there's no wiggle room in there.
You haven't been, Jim, everything was attached to it?
It should have been, maybe last week.
You got your copy? So we need an awarding today, is that what you're saying?
Be nice to go ahead and get an award and get it on the schedule to coordinate with the heating and air conditioning and the carpet people.
Lighting.
And lighting. Because this is high one.
They've already awarded the lighting, right?
The lighting's awarded, make sure you use the lighting for award. Floor has been done, that's all. Floor is due to come in the next week or ten.
And the signage is next, so as a bid.
Right.
But we're looking at doing the public areas for sure.
Yeah.
Can we get your employees to paint their own offices?
But the public areas and the exam rooms really do need it, but offices, we could either wait or we could do it ourselves.
I know we had talked at one time about having some painting parties, maybe, maybe that would be doable.
I mean definitely the common areas need to be done. Hallways and the... All the lounge areas. Waiting rooms. But even with that, it's still gonna be over budget, so. At some point, what we don't do this year, we're gonna end up doing probably next year or somewhere along the way.
So I have 49 over there?
Yeah.
That's pretty hard numbers. And that's with the 43 all in there?
Right. And the sign is all in there.
I wonder if we need four signs if we could send that. Three, I don't know.
It's only eight grand there anyway, so it's not gonna save, we need to save about 29 grand.
Yeah. We're counting on Christie getting that much from WIC. I don't know.
Even that much from WIC, I don't know. That might go with the kitchen remodel, we don't have that in there yet, so.
Well, but the kitchen remodel was Lions Club, wasn't it?
Cosmo.
Cosmo, sorry.
I haven't heard back.
Yeah, if, if they will do it.
We don't have to make a decision today, but we do need to start moving along. I mean, I would, I would say even if we're close to 200, you know, anticipate some extras along the way because we have no wiggle room in there. Think about it.
Could we award everything but delete the 6,150 for offices and try to do those ourselves?
Who's gonna do it?
We're gonna do it, right Christie?
Me and you.
All of our happy employees.
That would really change the dynamics of the bid if you took that one out of one and then you just went with the other two. So you'd probably be looking at a different vendor then. You wouldn't be staying in vendor number one, you'd go to vendor number three. Because there's such a big difference between the public areas on that bid. So it would swing you back to bidder number three. And bidder number one is really the only vendor that gave you a break for doing all three of them.
Are you gonna help them paint in your free time?
Yeah.
Wedding season.
Sleep is overrated.
I don't see that as an option unless they came up, said they wanted to do that, so.
Okay. Is that gonna waste the same money?
What do you wanna do?
I think we need to award it and just keep moving ahead. I mean, we can, we can postpone it, but we'll be back here sort of saying things, so. I don't know where we can save money elsewhere, but I mean, we might as well do it. I mean, it needs to be done before we move in. And so, you know, one way or another, we're gonna have to bite the bullet, so.
Silence is great, isn't it?
It is. Phil and I will make a motion, we award the interior painting contract to Extreme Painting for $43,000.
I'll second for more discussion with my pals.
So, discuss.
Well, that's not the lowest bid, so is there a reason why you picked that one?
They're both so close and I think having Extreme Painting here, I think it's gonna be quicker than bringing a Kansas City company in. I know when we had the Wilson Group here, it's... That was something else.
So the better reason to go with Extreme was is they checked out this other company's references and they weren't very good, so.
I would say fair.
One of them didn't even exist.
True.
Or we didn't find what the number they gave us, so. I just want to be clear about that, that's why I'm going out there, why you're going with the different one in the lowest. And I'm fine for that reason with them to be in the local as well, helping around the decision. But we also will look at the added value pricing, because if we do add something, it could make it up real quick, that difference, so. Now files, going ahead and awarding this and let's get this moving. We're gonna have a few orders somewhere, hopefully get some, a little more money from the grants that were requested. If not, it just makes sense to do it now rather than move stuff off the walls, away from walls later on, or be painting on the top of new carpets, so. Also, for the same reasons you just indicated about the award to Extreme, so.
Good.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll bring you the contract next week then for them.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Saff, 2018-26.
These are the conditions that...
Is this, this is Landing Creek?
This is Landing Creek.
Is this 30 days is up or...
The 30 days are up. They were told on that date that this was the drop date. I don't wanna take away that they haven't, and say that they haven't done anything, but the boat is still there that was going the next day. These photos were taken yesterday after, or yesterday morning. And when I say the tires, the majority of the tires are gone. There's still a few strewn about the property along with the other sawn ways that's out there.
What was the abatement cost?
Uh, the contract is not exceed $3,090. The recommendations are worth the contract, work with the contractor to adjust his price accordingly to the amount of stuff that's out there.
I was by there Wednesday and then came back by through later on and even at night and dark, it doesn't look much better. It's still mess. So, I mean, I think we need to move on it. This has been going on long enough. We gave him 30 more days. She came in here and she promised it would be cleaned up if we gave an extension. I know he's been in and out of the hospital or whatever, but they've had time to at least clean it up. At least throw the trash inside and the stuff is just all over the place down there.
I'd say 90% of what's left out there is garbage.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if they wanna try to recycle anything.
There's not much recyclable.
No.
There's a little bit of copper, there's a little bit of steel, and most of it is garbage.
You got the contract?
Have the contract, the contractors already signed.
I move that we abate the property and award the contractor to Capital City Lawn Care to do the cleanup on 2934 Landing Creek.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 2018-28 signage, Health Department, then I'm gonna skip around a little bit. Some of these people out.
Okay, again, this was the bid for the signage out at the new Health Department site. There was two bidders. The lowest bid being the $8,075. I would recommend you award that bid to B.C. Signs. And I do have a contract here.
We talked about this last week, what were we...
Yeah, so there's four signs basically. So the cost for all four signs.
So we're just deciding if we're gonna still do all four?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, I mean, obviously we gotta do at least a couple of them. Why do we do all of them? Oh, it's Christie.
How much does it save us if we don't do that lighted one that's in the middle of the two concrete ones out front?
1525. That's one that's the lit sign on this.
Right, I'm not sure that one's really needed with the other two concrete ones there, especially if we take some trees out and you can actually see the building. And it's not a whole lot of money, but...
So they're lit, but are y'all open at night, so?
The other two have like fog lights on too, right? So I mean, all three are lit. I'm just not sure you really need that little one out.
So I guess, and I'm not looking at it right now, but I guess my thought would have been to do the lit one and not do the other two.
The other two are like concrete, so I was just thinking they might be a little bit harder to take out.
Right. So keep in mind, we'd like to remove the trees, but we don't have that in the budget either. There's no tree removal, so.
Well, I think when Public Works wants to try out some of their new equipment.
Well, yeah, but...
When you get done with the painting, Sam, you can go out there and start cutting trees.
So if you wanna pay Public Works 20 grand to do it, that's fine, so.
Yeah. Just some of them signs, are they just back so far because of the right of way? They just didn't seem like the sign placement was very good.
I think it's just such a big, it's a big frontage, so.
I'd have one by the, the street that you're turning on and then one by the driveway would be the most important.
Two concrete ones that you could see from each direction and then they added that middle one because pathways was in the building with them and they wanted to be able to advertise for pathways, but Alex said we don't have that.
I just think the big one by the driveway or by the, the street would make sense. I don't have the pictures of them here. I found the bid again from...
Well, but so, I mean, obviously the two concrete ones are more directional, right? So if you're coming from the, from the east, you can see one. Come from the west, you see one. And there's one off Constitution that tells you where you're going up in the driveway. So either gotta do the two concrete ones or the one lit one, because the one lit one's really multidirectional, so.
Can't do one on, right on the corner of Constitution that you have seen?
If you're coming from Ivy or that west end, you won't ever see it till you're already past it.
Till you're past, yeah.
So that's where the lit one is perpendicular to Truman Road and you can see it from both directions. I mean, probably not a big deal. We could wait on it and we could take a look at it.
I was thinking they were so far up off the road and towards the woods, you didn't see them anyway.
The concrete ones are more up, they're closer to the, the woods. They're more off the road, I would say, behind the lit, the lit sign, correct?
Okay.
So how much would be the concrete one?
Well, they're about 2,700.
Yeah, you're saving 50.
I just didn't think you could see those.
5,000.
I mean, it's always something we could add something back later. I mean, we'll probably get a discounted rate. We could put the lit sign and the street sign and...
Yeah, I'm gonna go by there and see.
That's fine, let's wait a week then.
I was out that way the other day too and I didn't even, I wasn't even thinking about it, so. Yeah, this one we can hold off a little more on.
Put it back in a week, Debbie.
Put it back next week.
Okay. I'm gonna jump around a little bit, because Larry and I, you guys gotta stay here anyway, but I think we'll go to the 2018-24 Rens Lake discussion.
We put an advertisement out asking for proposals for the old Rens Lake area. We did receive one proposal. It was from landowners adjacent to the lake area itself, the former lake area. It's, they have looked into it and like we suspected, the former lake area has been declared a wetlands now. If they would wanna build a lake back there, they would have to mitigate, which either means they have to find a site there locally to construct a wetland or they have to pay into the Wetland Mitigation Bank. Right now, it's too expensive for them to, to look at doing a lake. What they're proposing to do is to turn it back into nature area where the landowners will maintain it jointly. What they're proposing is if this, if the proposal is accepted within 30 days, they'd form an association and assume that they'll take over the maintenance of the property. It would be our recommendation that the commission look at this strongly. I think it's a wise move. It's leaving the property in the hands of the people that live around it, so. We do have one of the landowners here, Mr. Keller and his wife, so if you have any questions of them...
I just wanna thank them.
Yeah, I had, I had met with them and I'm, I'm very impressed, so I, I'm, I think this is our best...
I agree.
Yeah, it's the best thing we can do for it, so.
So the land would go into the homeowners association, correct?
Yeah, we would establish homeowners association, collect dues on an annual basis. Collect dues on an annual basis and then as funds are available and as we identify potentially other sources, we can make improvements to the land, but presently just continue to maintain what the county's been mowing and then see what we are able to do in the lake bed over time.
I'm fine with it. I'd just like to get it out of our hands and if it's going back into the property owner's hands, even better. I think there were some conditions they was asking for us to do some...
They want us to mow until June 1st.
I'd be fine if we mowed it till the end of grass season. If they're gonna take it over, I'd, I'll work with them however we need to on this, so. I'm just glad y'all were able to put something together. I know we spoke at length on the phone, so, good deal.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with it as well, so, anyway. Hopefully they can do some really neat things with it, so.
So what do we just need to...
I would, I would suggest you probably make a, a motion to accept the proposal contingent to the forming of the home association as they propose, so.
Just need to word it just like that then? You got that one in? Anything else you wanna add to that or just you wanna do it that way?
Yeah, no, I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that's number two on my bucket list.
Yeah, now we're gonna skip around.
We gotta get him two more.
We're gonna skip around to the Mid-Missouri Amateur Radio Club Tower so that these gentlemen can...
I think it was back February or March, I approached the commission.
Thanks, Margaret.
Thank you, Margaret.
That we've, as far as emergency management partnered with the Mid-Missouri Amateur Radio Club. This is a very important means of communications in the, in our community, especially in times of disaster. If we have communications go down, the Amateur Radio Club would be our initial backup for all emergency services. Uh, especially in times of disaster, if we have communications go down, uh, the amateur radio club would be our, uh, initial backup for all emergency services. Uh, through the past several years, it's really grown in Cole County. Uh, both hospitals have amateur radios. Uh, Sheriff's Office has amateur, amateur radios. Nine-one-one center has amateur radios. So I think it's a great partnership, uh, that we've been able to build, uh, with the club. So in that, uh, they came and, and we've asked permission from the commission to install a tower at the backside of the building. Uh, this is a repeater tower that would not only help Cole County, uh, but the counties surrounding us too, that would actually boost that signal up. So I think in, in a lot of the conversations we had, uh, getting some professionals here to answer any questions you all may have as far as commission. I have, uh, Jack Rennie and Jim Biggerstaff, uh, who are the members of the club, uh, that, that can give you the professional, uh, answers that you might need. As well as, one of the things I think we talked about was the insurance. I have a copy of the insurance policy here as well. So I brought them here to meet with commission today, to answer any of your important questions.
Are stupid questions.
Well, these are, these are the professionals, so that's what we said we'd do. I think it's a great partnership, uh, that we'd have that. It's gonna help. Presently, and I think they can explain that the old tower now is at Holt Summit, and, uh, I think the gentleman's, uh, getting up at his age, and they're more afraid that if the family, if something does happen, the family may not, uh, continue to have that tower. It would go away. So this is a more important place to have it here in Cole County. Is that correct? Correct, yeah. So it's a great group. Uh, they're, like I said, they're all volunteers, but they work a lot. Uh, with Red Cross, they have amateur radio operators as well. Uh, they have kits that can be mobile, move to the fields. Uh, you know, if we'd have a big disaster of some kind, so I think it's a, a very good partnership for the county to do this. And, uh, we'll go from there.
I think you've already answered all my questions, Bill. I mean, obviously, it's a freestanding tower, and you said that it did have the ability to add different things.
Right.
If, if we needed, um, I haven't heard back from, uh, EMS or the sheriff as far as putting anything on it, so...
Yeah, our biggest, of course, we use that big cement tower there, you know, by Beet Drive, that's where a lot of our radio stuff's on, so it's way up in the air, so... If there's a timing, I think the, the gentleman would agree if there's something that we would need on there, that would not be a problem either. But they do have their own insurance. They, they will be doing, uh, all the work and supply on that, and the installation, I think, what I sent you was the diagrams of everything. And the location. It's kinda on the backside, uh, if you remember, on the backside of the Wayans Park, where that stair comes up.
Back by the generator, isn't it?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and there's no cost to us.
No, it's, nope, not at all to the county.
No, I didn't have any major questions with them. It's another part of public safety too, so makes sense, absolutely.
You got a contract, Bill?
No, not really contract. I didn't know if that's something we needed, or... This is just what I basically sent you with the letter and diagrams.
Do we need anything, gentlemen?
I don't, I mean, what are we doing as far as...
Well, they're, they're...
Putting and putting on our property.
Right, mhm. Yeah, just be in the backside.
We maybe should come up with something that has some sort of disclaimer, liability, and that kind of a thing.
Sure.
For people entering on the property to install it and that kind of thing. So I'll work with Bill.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. Sounds great to me.
Want you to motion to proceed, or just wait?
So I think that'd be good, yeah.
I move that we approve the, uh, Mid-Missouri Amateur Radio Club Tower project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now, we can go back to 2018 Asphalt Overlay Program Project Number 2018-501-1.
Okay, um, does anybody need copies of the bid tabs?
I was just wondering, were they, are they attached, Eric, or...
Yeah. We got a contract attached there too, so... I got it. Thank you. Yes, sir.
This year, it's, uh, considerably less than normal, and, uh, I'll explain. Um, the low bidder is Jefferson Asphalt in the amount of three hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred thirty-eight dollars, fifty-six cents. Um, this year, we've utilized, used some of the overlay funds to go towards Meadow Brook Estate subdivision. Um, also, we're doing some pavement repair on Willmore, and so some funds have been taken from that account for that, as well as Hot and Place Recycling, and then, uh, some additional things. So a lot of different things going into the 1.2 million, um, funding for overlays this year, and so, uh, we bid, um, we bid it, and we actually, we were pretty conservative on our budget amount and our estimate amount, and the prices came in pretty good. So, um, with that said, uh, we would recommend award, before I say that, let's, um, um, we have estimated, we probably have, give or take, about a hundred and thirty thousand still available in that account. And what we'd like to do, um, we're gonna, we need to bid the Willmore Street Replay, or Street Repair Project, and after that comes in, we'll see where we're at on some funds. We may try to add some additional funding into this contract, um, and, and overrun some quantities, um, if that's okay. But, um, for now, we'd like to award the, award the contract to Jefferson Amount, Jefferson Asphalt in that amount that I mentioned earlier. So any questions about that in particular?
Um, so the Willmore project, is that, that part of Stockman's project?
No, that is, uh, it's Sleepy Hollow Estate Subdivision. It's off of Seven Hills Road.
Oh, okay.
It's a totally separate thing.
Right, okay.
Um, but we've been working on doing a project out there. We were gonna mill and overlay it. There's too much good concrete there to do that, and so the, the most cost-effective avenue would be to, to repair the concrete. We also have a stormwater component to that that you guys signed the contract on with CNPS a couple of weeks ago. And that is done and designed, so, um, like I said, well, we'll bid that project, see where our funding is after that, and then possibly have some money left over. Any leftover funding in the, in that overlay account, I would like to put all that towards asphalt overlay. So we may let you know in advance of some, you know, additional roads we might do with this, if it works out that there's money available. And in the end, we'll do a change order for the full amount, if we have to.
So how much was in the, uh, the asphalt overlay account?
There's 1.2 million each year.
Okay.
In the previous sales tax discussion, or in the current sales tax, when we were talking about those projects a few years ago, as that was coming about, we had mentioned that we would add concrete street repairs into that part of the budget, uh, just for a way to take care of some of these concrete streets that we have. Typically, when you think of resurfacing, it's asphalt, but it's not just that. It's pavement preservation and all other things combined into that.
So in the overlay, we have the chip seal and a lot of that other stuff too?
Yeah.
So...
And we're actually, like Erica alluded to, we're actually doing a, a new treatment that we're trying this year. It's called Hot Place, um, Hating, uh, where it uses the old asphalt and re-does it. So that's all coming out of this account. That's why the asphalt's not 1.2 as...
Right.
But our prices were really good this year.
Sure.
From what we've seen in the past, so it's definitely, we wanna award this project. Um, a lot of other discussion along with this, um, and kinda explains why it's a little bit lower than normal. But part of it is just because the prices did come in pretty good.
So do you have a, uh, I mean, obviously, you've probably got a spreadsheet that shows what we're doing out of that 1.2 in different parts. I mean, I don't, I don't need it today, but I was just looking at the contract, and about 270 is ours out of this, and then the rest is St. Martin's.
Yep.
That they're picking up, I assume. So just be kinda curious. At some point, shoot me something on where those dollars are coming out of that fund for different things.
Yeah, it's a pretty elaborate spreadsheet, and it's, it's, it's not easy to do.
Okay, well, give me the Cliff Notes version.
Here's the, here's the, here's the Cliff Notes right here.
Well, because nobody buy the books. Perfect. I move that we award the 2018 Asphalt Overlay Program Project Number 2017-501-1 to Jefferson Asphalt Company Incorporated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 2018 Chip Seal Program Project Number 2018-502-1.
So, um, we opened bids on this as well last Friday, and the low bidder is Missouri Petroleum in the amount of 257,820 dollars, twenty-nine cents. Their per unit price is a dollar twenty-two cents, actually 1.219 per square yard, which is less than our estimate. Um, chip seal prices have been coming in good lately, so, um, we'd recommend award to Missouri Petroleum in that amount. And kinda the same discussion with the asphalt. Some of the savings of this would go into, um, some funding that would be available to put towards a little more asphalt at the end of the year if we, if that money is, is there, so...
Okay. And this still is the, the chip seal with the Iron Mountain Rock and...
Yep.
Like we've been doing?
It's very, very good preventive maintenance product.
How many, uh, how many miles of this will we be doing? Do you know approximately?
Oh, golly. Um, and I figured in square yards, it's 200,000 square yards, so...
Okay. You can give it to me later.
The Cliff Notes version, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I move that we award the 2018 Chip Seal Program Project Number 2018-502-1 to Missouri Petroleum Products Company.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any unfinished business? New business? Accounts payable review?
And as for approval, accounts payable pending review.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a couple of, uh... Yeah, I saw them.
Okay.
So there's a, there's a couple of invoices out there that, uh, aren't coming to our level, and I have reviewed them, so, um, just basically some Cole County Industries invoices for concrete and a couple for the recorder, so, anyway, but I move that we approve accounts payable and these other invoices.
Second.
Any review, sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I might move Eric, County Treasure Investment. Eric, you wanna run this real quick, and I'll get you out of here. Jerry likes to stay here.
You all have your copy of the investment report that I sent you. You all had, uh, in the investment policy that we had approved last year, had wanted, uh, me to, uh, provide a monthly report. And this is our best, uh, best way of putting it all on one sheet of paper here. Right now, we have, um, seven million dollars in investments. A total of three of those are in, come out of the general revenue fund. A total of three million additionally comes out of the law enforcement fund. One million dollar part of the long-term investment portfolio comes out of the health insurance fund. And I'll just leave it at that right now, if y'all have any questions. We have, uh, as you can see on there, under the maturity date column, second one down matures May 10th. And law enforcement, a couple of rows down matures also May the 10th. That's four million dollars that, uh, matures with interest, May the 10th. And so in working with Debbie and Kristen, uh, we intend on reinvesting 3.5 of that four million. We're leaving 1.5, um, which we wanted to invest, uh, given the timing of the purchase of the Health Department building, and when that four million matures, we just thought we would just leave that be, uh, and defer to Debbie and Kristen on, you know, leaving that money liquid in the account instead of investing it for 30 days. So, so that's where we stand right now. I think Sam, in your email to me, you had to ask for an accounting on how much we've made. Uh, originally, we had a two million thirty-dollar, or thirty-day T-bill that matured about this time last month. Um, we had a yield of 1.47 percent, which got us 2,336 and a dollars and eleven cents. If we had left it, uh, in our demand deposit account, it would have earned 411 dollars instead of more than 2,300 dollars. Uh, same with a thirty-day, four million dollar T-bill, oh, excuse me, the one that we're going to be maturing here shortly, that will yield us 4,964 dollars, or 1.56, versus 822 dollars if we had left it, uh, in our demand deposits. And if you all remember, our kind of line in the sand is to invest anything over 34 million dollars into U.S. Treasuries. Which brings me to my last note on the summary of investments that I just handed you. Some of those are treasury notes, some of those are bills. A bill is simply a treasury that's one year or less in duration, and a note would be two years or more in duration, so, well, anything more than a year, so...
I think it makes sense to keep doing what we're doing. I mean, that's, that's a, quite a difference in, uh, money we've made, so...
I will say there's a, there's a slight, uh, difference in how the math is used to come up with what amount of money is available to invest. And, um, I, I think I, I see both sides of the equation. I think Kristen and Debbie are, are a little more conservative. Mark, uh, Reether, who with, with estate for three decades, is, is looking at more than, let's say, just what's in the accounting system at any given time. He's looking at, uh, and projecting, uh, what income will be there at the time that we would make those investment decisions. And so I think we're gonna let Mark's math, uh, kind of, uh, since he did so well 30 days ago, got us down to 34.1, I think was the right way of saying it. Thirty-four, we ended April with 34.1, and then, so we got pretty close. So that's, and that's, that's our intent each time, is at the end of the month to have right at 34 million. There's no sense to have 35 or 36 million when you could snag some extra yield with that one or two extra million. So, anyway, I appreciate Kristen and Debbie's patience in working with us on this, and, uh, so hopefully, we've got to the point where, where we can coordinate that amount that's available to be invested every 30 or so days. Hopefully, we can go out a little longer, 60 or 90 days, and not have to come to you all every single time. But, um, I, I, I just, I think it's on the right track now, so... Sound good?
I think you're good.
We haven't approved that yet, have we?
I didn't think so.
What?
Sam did, I guess.
No. No. I just said he's done really well.
Said that for good, you said yeah.
So, where's the report from the last month? I mean, because this report doesn't tell me what we've earned at all. This report shows a market value, but it doesn't show the earnings.
Right, if the investment policy does not, in the reporting requirements that were in that policy, does not say that the monthly report is supposed to have the earnings. It should, but it doesn't. And so, I, I went through that very carefully and put in what the report tells me, what the policy says should be in there. And I can certainly make a footnote to every subsequent investment report that I, that I do monthly that would have a very visible, clearly delineated yield that we get on all of our maturing investments, if that's what you want. But I, I did what the investment policy told me to do in terms of what's supposed to be in the report. How much we earned was not part of what was in the requirement, so. And that's why I'm here to?
Yeah, well, that's why I'd ask you, you know, to give us a report on how much we earned, just because.
Right, right.
I think that's, I think that's important.
I mean, it's hard to see the full picture when, you know, your thirty day T, Treasury Bill or whatever hasn't matured, you know, what, what did we make in that thirty day window? Whether that's in the investment policy or not, I mean, it's?
I agree.
You know, if you, you know, basically, we're taking your, your kind of word for it, and I'm not saying that ain't good, but, you know, I think it'd be nice for everybody to know that, hey, you know, that million dollars or whatever we invested for thirty days yielded us two thousand dollars.
Who you, you would have? Go ahead.
What's an investment policy is what is mandatory to be included?
Yeah.
It doesn't mean that other information necessarily has to be excluded.
That's why I just offered in subsequent reports that all include that.
Yeah.
I was trying to go exactly by the book to, to be cohesive.
But if they want more information, it's not going to violate the policy to include it.
Absolutely not. Look at this report or the last report that you had, I think there was a summary of investments that wasn't technically a monthly report. All you'd have to do is take the purchase price and subtract that from the par value and that would, that gives you the numbers that we, that I just gave you. So, at any given time, we know when we purchase it, as it hangs there, you know, in its duration, and at the end, when it matures, any point along the way, the beginning, the middle of the end, you can calculate to the penny how much we'll earn, how much we have earned or how much we're earning.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So, you take market value minus purchase price and it gives you your interest?
No, purchase price from par value. The market value is, I, I say in the?
I see, okay.
If you look at that first paragraph, the, at the, the last sentence is very important. That's why I put this in here. Market value may be higher or lower than the purchase price. And that's, that's if for, for some reason you all needed to liquidate those treasuries today and had to go out on the market. That's an approximation of what you could resell that for at this time. But of course, you guys are in, you guys are in it for the long haul. You're going to wait until it matures, get all your principal back plus your interest. So, market value is required to be reported in the policy of investment, I think, for accounting purposes. You always want market value to show what your value, what your assets are valued at any given point in time. This is a little snapshot of that. But since we're not going to sell it today or tomorrow, then we can ignore market value, so.
Okay, thank you.
See, I didn't get any of those emails. I don't have any kind of reports. I don't know if you got them, Chris. The only thing I had was May third from Debbie, something that you sent her and saying that you and Sam had talked and you all were okay with the four million, so I didn't see any reports. This is the first I'm seeing of this.
Okay, well, my expectation was to, along with what Chris is suggesting, every thirty days, provide a memo just like this and I'll include down at the bottom how much we have earned and try to make it as inclusive as possible. In other words, giving a snapshot of how much we've earned, looking backwards.
I'd just say add this stuff or whatever you're sending to Sam to all three of us.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was doing that, yeah, that was an oversight on my part. Again, I was going by the, the policy and so I sent it to the committee.
No, that's fine, I just say on the future ones and then we'll, we'll see this, because I said this, first I've seen this.
Yeah.
Y'all, you have the three and a half, I mean, it makes sense if we're going to have thirty-seven and a half there projected. I mean, I think I'm all right with three and a half, too.
Okay.
So, I just, I hadn't seen this, Eric, so.
That was my, it's an oversight, not to send it to you and Chris. I just sent it to the committee.
Debbie, Debbie forwarded it to me, so I did look, look over it, so, anyway. So, we're going to go another thirty days and then we're, we're going to come back, or?
Well, I mean, at some point, I can come back, just like today, give you all another report in person, or I can do a better job of sending you all what I send to the investment committee, which is an update of, of this, what I just provided today. If that suffices, we can, we can go that route. If you want to do this for another month or two or three, we're happy to be here and explain and answer any questions. It's up to you all. At some point, we'll all feel comfortable enough?
Sure.
That we can just get a, an emailed monthly report, but I'll leave it up to you all and tell me when we're at that point, so.
Yeah, and always report what we made. I liked, I liked, in comparison.
Right.
I think that's good.
Okay.
The other, the other thing I will say is rates, Federal Reserve is kicking up the, the Fed funds rate in June, another point twenty-five percent. Markets are already starting to bake in that. It's up to one point eight seven, which brings us now to two point zero three percent that we're going to start earning on our money in the bank. So, so what costs all of us more interest in bank loans, car loans, mortgages, which is not necessarily a good thing, it's a good thing for, for county that we get to higher yield on our, on our investments, so. The trend is good. If you're not a consumer.
So, are we, are we in agreement where the three and a half million's coming from, for the thirty days?
Yeah, I think the two million that's in law, of course, that will stay and then the other one and a half will be out of general.
Okay. Good with that?
Yeah, we defer to them completely on which funds it comes out of. The amount, we have a slightly different view, but where it comes from is really the choice of Debbie and Kristen to direct us, so.
Okay. I move that we move forward on investing three and a half million in thirty day T bill.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. We'll go back to discussion of EMS copiers.
Thank.
I sent you an email last week. One of our original copiers is just, we have, we've been having the repairman in every week and, in short, I think it's around nine years old, it's past its useful life. So, I started doing some analysis of what we're using our copiers for and, like anything else, once you start peeling the onion back, you find out all kinds of things. So, we have three copiers and we currently pay three different service contracts. So, what was happening was the service contract that we have for the fifty thousand prints, which is in our staff room, which is largely used by our crews to do patient care records and what have you, is the one that's down. So, conversely, they started using another copier that only has, I believe, ten thousand capacity, so we were over in that, so we were paying a per-page surplus cost in that and our, I couldn't understand how come our prices kept going up and as we drilled down, we found out why. So, I found out that our current IT director used to be in this business, so we started exploring options and for the last two months, we've been working with different vendors and suppliers under the state purchasing contract. And what we propose doing is what you have in your hands now, and that is replace the old outdated copier with a basic level copier that's specified there, out of the state purchasing contract, that's thirty-nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. Trade in our old one or, or replace our old one with that. And then what we did was we combined our annual service fees into one. And by doing that, we reduced our annual payment in half. So, we're still getting the same number of copies. We no longer had, we would no longer have one service contract, if you will, or one for each copier. We would have one for all three copiers. Therefore, on the, the single page that I gave you, it shows our annual cost, it's going to take it currently from thirteen seventy-eight down to seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars annual. So, Brian and I recommend proceeding with this. The upfront purchase cost is thirty-nine forty-nine twenty-eight. That gets us the copier and then with that comes the thirty-year service plan. It's not really a service contract, it's a service plan that pays for everything except paper and staples, but they replace the toner and all that. So, we recommend proceeding with this.
How many years was that, thirty?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six months.
Months.
Oh, awesome.
Three years. I'll be alive in thirty years.
Did that count the one copy machine that's on the bill sign that you had three?
Yes, yes. We have two on our side, Bill has one. We pay it all for some reason. Found that out.
Well, we were.
Are you parsing it out? Okay, okay, well, you can keep doing that. We just didn't know. It just looked like it was all on us, so, at least when they did the analysis.
Sure, now Mr. IT comes in.
Just in time.
There's a little lag between me coming up and me watching it.
I just said your name, so your ears must have rung.
So, this is a purchase of this copier?
Correct.
Thirty-nine forty-nine and then a reduction in an annual amount?
Correct.
Of about seven hundred dollars?
Correct. And we did the upfront cost. You can see that the number of copies included in that remains the same. So, it is a true reduction by nearly half. There's no reduction in the copies covered under the agreement moving forward.
So, where's the, I assume you probably don't have the money in your budget?
No, well, depends on how you want it. We could take it out of our capital improvement fund if you want to go that route.
Right, but you don't have it in your regular budget.
What's in the capital either, so we have to transfer into that capital contingency or maybe something in capital's not happening.
Yeah, that, what my suggestion would be, let's take it out of capital and let's see. I, I'm, we have thirty-seven thousand for, to start our radio, portable radio replacement. I'm not sure right now we're going to pull the trigger on that. We're still drawing up the specs. We're waiting for Jennifer to get back. We're still going to go through the bidding process, but it may be such a thing that, I wasn't ready to have this discussion, that down the road, I would come and say, let's defer that money to next year, because we were going to phase it in half this year and half next year. It looks like we may have an interoperability problem and if that's it, we'll have to take the big swing at it in one year, but we would just, I would recommend deferring that money. So, we have, my point is, there's money in that account. If you want to go that route, just, we should just take it there and let's see how the capital improvement account plays out as the year moves on. If you want to go out of that account.
Questions, good?
I'm fine with it, yeah.
Okay. Move that we approve the purchase of the copier out of EMS Capital Improvements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey. Downtown Jefferson City Thursday Night Live.
Well, I got the request for that. I was trying to look up some history on that, too. I don't, I'm not finding anything, really.
I think we started doing that one mark, was, presided.
We started in two thousand fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, you gave us your twenty-five hundred. They did not receive anything in two thousand seventeen and we did not technically specify budget for two thousand eighteen.
Kristen, did we get a request for seventeen?
If you did, it did not come to me. It may have come to you in the process.
All right. I was just curious. There is some discretionary money in economic development.
Yes, we did put some funds in there if something came up during the year that you wanted to contribute to.
Where's that in the budget book?
One twenty-seven, general accounts. So, in two thousand eighteen, we did away with our health and welfare department because we got rid of those contributions. And now, anything you give like that is in economic development in one twenty-seven.
Yeah, it used to be way back in the back. I was looking back there. I don't know, I thought we usually had a list of requests at the beginning of the year, so we don't email them or mail them?
We quit doing that.
Yeah, if you remember, we sent them a letter saying we don't want ten.
Yeah, well, I think we pretty much may have think that the money was there.
Well, in last year, we did. We did away with everyone but Salute to America.
Yeah.
We just said we weren't going to email you or mail you. You have to take it upon yourself. Because we used to mail letter to them, tell them if they want the money, they need to submit a request.
Right.
But then we took the? Right.
And then we took out, we're not going to send you the letter anymore. You still have to request it, though.
And I think Salute did, didn't they?
I don't know. I didn't read it.
You didn't see it?
Right, Debbie, you're shaking your head.
Soil and water conservation.
You're shaking your head, Debbie, what?
Well, I just understood that we sent them a letter at the end of the one budget you were saying, that, you know?
Yeah, we may not.
May not.
May not.
Fund any of these projects any longer.
Yeah, we said we advise this, probably not going to fund it.
I just said we weren't going to email them or mail them anymore to send in a request. That they got to take it upon themselves. It's like, they have to request it whether we have it in there or not. If they don't request it, then we're not going to even consider it.
I mean, we basically told them no reason to request it.
I wrote the letter, I mean, and I remember you all talking about it.
I don't think I put, I don't think I meant it that way. I think they could still ask for it. I didn't say it wasn't going to be in there. We got money in there, money in there for, every year, under economic development that we could put towards those projects.
Right, I think the letter was basically going out for a lot of the folks that were getting money, funding under general welfare.
Yeah, that's true, Chris.
So, that's totally.
Right.
Which one is welfare under?
It's probably not in there anymore.
Well, I'm not, I'm, I'm in seventeen, so.
So, one forty-three was welfare.
And it's way towards the back one.
That's a profitability.
Should be with. Should be with the health department.
It's health and welfare, sixty-two. It's back a little ways.
So, do you have any interest in funding Thursday Night Live, or?
I don't know what's different between it and salute.
I think.
Two different events.
This is a festival district event, so it's...
Sam likes it.
You know, it brings people downtown. My store is not open. It does not, it does not benefit the... If we do this, then Old Munich or Oktoberfest will be coming to us, too, just so you know. And that's...
They never have. I don't, we've given the Salute a lot. I mean, sometimes you gotta pick and choose.
Yeah.
So...
So, what's the difference between it and Salute? Salute's for July fourth, this is for Thursdays of the summer. They're both downtown, so, guess that's what I'm throwing out there, what the...
Right, well, I mean...
What the difference between the two of them are.
Salute has beer gardens where you're, the festival district, you can walk around all over downtown.
So, that should probably make more sense as economic development, because it's bringing people downtown to spend money.
Well, they both are. I mean, I think it's the scale of the project. I mean, so, people are free to patronize every business for both events. You know, Salute brings a lot of people into downtown, and there's, there's food vendors, but they can also eat at all the restaurants, and go in and cool off in someplace. And so, it's just more the scale of the event. You know, you're talking probably fifty thousand people versus five thousand people. If you get five thousand, I don't know. Probably two to three, maybe.
Not that I like to argue, but...
Yeah, you do.
Salute to America, you bring outside vendors into downtown Jefferson City for them to eat, buy stuff out, and then that money disappears from here, so... So, I think the downtown one would make more sense, even though you're closed, Sam. You should be open late.
We tried being open late.
Do you realize how many dr...
And you basically have people coming in and wanting to use your bathrooms. Because it's not, it's not a retail, they don't wanna carry a sack around with the...
Tell them you don't have a public restroom.
We're gonna keep these blue porta-potties here, like Sam Gaines had. Jerry?
I just wanted to remind you that for all these events, there's a lot of in-kind contribution that the county provides, too, in terms of EMS, sheriff, law enforcement, security detail. That's a fairly significant cost, especially on the July fourth, the two or three days that we have our operations center open downtown. And for Thursday Night Live, we designate an ambulance down there. Now, they're part of the duty crews that may be subject to a call, but we do put an ambulance down there. So, I just wanted to remind you of that as well.
And Michael Coute has his...
We got the MEOC at the Salute, so we're throwing extra at it, so...
You got the MEOC, you got all your generators, you got Belfair. That's, that's quite the, quite the amount of resources that are being used down here, but...
All right, well...
Of course, they need to be run, too, so... Getting the kinks out. Yay, nay? Sounds like maybe you wanna get more money.
I didn't mean for it to sound that way. I was just in the mood to argue about it today. So...
I'm gonna put a bourbon bourbon out in front of my store.
There you go.
Well, you have to have a bourbon.
To get a liquor license.
Yeah, get a liquor license.
I probably oughta have one anyway.
As long as you don't, if you give it away, you don't have to have a liquor license.
That's true. I don't know, I wish they'd request it all before we do budget, so we can put it in there and decide then, so, I don't know. That's where I think the, it's benefiting the downtown folks and their ones. Should be footing a bill for it. You're getting free advertising, they walk by your store, you should pay for it. They're doing selfies and stuff right by you. You should put a, some kind of a selfie tux thing in front of your store. So, you should sell them tux T-shirts.
Man, while we're talking about it, didn't happen this year, but we had substantial investment in getting the state track meet here in this, later this month. And so, you know, one of the thoughts that had, somebody asked me about, was having a Thursday Night Live during, while the state track meet was going on. And so, obviously, that's not part of the original Thursday Night Live. I mean, you got a lot of people here in town, and I think it would be a good, good event. Obviously, you couldn't have it both weeks, but, you know, you'd have to pick one or the other. But all the hotels are full, all, all over town and surrounding towns, so...
You have Memorial Weekend, which normally would be a dead, it's, everything's full.
So, I mean, that might be something that we look at next year, and that would require additional funding, is what I was told. But, and it wouldn't be for the athletes. The athletes are gonna be back at their rooms, hopefully resting and getting ready to compete, but for all the adults that are in town, so, just a thought. I think it's a good event. I maybe that we give the Thursday Night Live twenty-five hundred dollars.
I'll second for more discussion. So, what are we giving Salute? Five thousand?
Five thousand.
What else have we given out of economic development?
Except for the chamber.
Well, what about, what about the legislative event?
Oh, yeah, the, yeah.
Taste of Jefferson.
Yeah, Taste of Jefferson.
But that's it for this year, right?
Did we pay out all the port feasibility that was in there?
We paid it all out. There's no encumbrance.
No, there's still encumbrance.
Yeah.
What was that total? Forty-seven thousand was the port feasibility study.
I don't know. I just, I think the downtown one is benefiting the downtown, and it's their event.
Well, they host it, and I think they charge so much for the...
Wristbands, I think.
Wristband and the cup. So, I know most retail stores are not open that night, just because it's not a retail night. It's more of a night for, you've got the music, you've got the bands, but I think it's more of a night for the restaurants and the bars.
Which is downtown in the evening, so... Still some retail there, right? Don't they pay some on the food? Tax on the beers?
I think the downtown association helps fund it somewhat, don't they?
They do. Just not grass, kinda overseas, but... It's not a moneymaker, I mean, it's not a...
How is Salute a moneymaker? I'll just go back to it. I put these both on the same page.
I think so.
Not crazy about either one of them. I think they're both a good event for the community. I don't think either one raises money.
Well, they both pay for themselves. And I mean, so, I mean, obviously, you have chances to have live entertainment, to, you know, bring people into your community. So, the event itself, Salute, you know, sometimes makes a little money, and they roll that over year to year. Obviously, the prison concert has gotten bigger, and so, you know, that's, that's a bigger draw, but... I mean, community our size needs events to, to draw people in. And so, the economic impact of restaurants and downtown businesses and stuff, just like last weekend with the Shelby Fest, I mean, huge event.
They were from all over, oh my God.
So, I mean, you, you got hotels, but...
Texas, Iowa.
Heads and beds, you know, restaurants, I mean, so, it's hard to know what that economic impact is, but...
Yeah, but Thursday Night Live doesn't have that. Salute doesn't really have that.
Oh, yeah. I'll tell you, when I worked at Republican Booth, there were people from Michigan, there were people from Iowa, there were people from Arkansas.
They're probably coming here anyway to be with the family.
They're still here.
We do have one of the better fireworks shows around.
We do, and I think that draws...
I mean, it, it may not bring, it may not put the people in the hotels, but, you know, a lot of people do travel in for the day and stay for the fireworks show, and they're spending money while they're here, so...
What else we got on the agenda yet? See how many people I'm holding up here. I know you got, we gotta vote on it yet.
There we have a motion this second.
You wanna call a clock on me? It's like a card game? I don't know, I'm still not crazy about it. When we can... Go ahead and call the vote, if you want to.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
No.
Aye? Yeah?
Well, if we had more discussion, I could let it die, but I was, I didn't know it yet.
Okay. Eric, we've got approval and sign of drive approach and pipe policy. You sent us an email saying...
Yes.
Lucky you're still here, we'd still be talking about Thursday Night Live. I'm not told it, yes, I just like to do that at budget time.
I sent you an email and said that if, if we wanna just discuss it today and, and table the vote till next week, that's fine with me. I'm not pressing to do it. I know a little history behind it. We, kinda through Chris's direction and Larry Bishop's request, I guess.
Sure, why me, Eric?
Always gotta find a scapegoat somewhere. We, we work with our Road and Bridge Advisory Committee, probably going on upwards of a year or so, to draft a policy that we can use when dealing with drive approaches and driveway pipes out in the county. We get into situations in which property owners call in and request that we replace their drive approach due to a number of different conditions, as well as driveway pipes. Also, drive approaches can be, usually, you think of an approach in a curb and gutter street in the subdivision, but they can also be approaches to the more rural county roads. And so, we tried to take every possible scenario we could think of and put it into a policy in which we'll kinda lay out some guidelines on when we will go and replace a drive approach at county expense, or when we will tell a property owner, no, this is your responsibility to repair, if you want it repaired. And so, we came up with, basically, the categories of construction and... Back up just a second. Dealing with existing approaches, we also needed to include in the policy new approaches that somebody wants to put in. And so, there's a section that addresses the construction of new driveway approaches, driveways and driveway pipes. We do get questions occasionally. Somebody's putting in a, a new driveway onto a road, a rural road that has no curb and gutter. Do I have to put the pipe in, or does the county put the pipe in? And so, we basically lined out what our current policy is on that, just to include in this whole policy. But then also added in a replacement of existing drive approaches on curb and gutter streets, and replacement of existing drive approaches on streets with no curb and gutter. And then, replacement of existing driveway pipes and extension of driveway pipes. So, it, it covers about everything we could possibly think of. But in a nutshell, the, the main item is, on curb and gutter streets, replace a drive approach. Who does it? Okay. So, we laid out different scenarios, and the main, the main part of what we're trying to do is, where the, we wanted to clarify that the county is not responsible to replace a drive approach just for purely cosmetic reasons. Occasionally, a drive, it gets cracked, it's put in wrong, got a number of different issues, and it's really a cosmetic issue for the property owner. We don't, the county doesn't benefit from having a drive approach, the property owner does. And so, we laid out those reasons. Now, there are conditions in which we will, in this policy, replace a drive approach, and it could be due to an ongoing project, like, for example, Stormwater Project, in which we're, we're doing now. We have to replace the approach as we're doing the curb and gutter. If the street is damaged in front of the approach, we need to do the approach as well as, while we're doing the, the street in front. If there's a stormwater-related issue in which the approach is contributing, or whatever, we kinda, that's one that we would have to look at, at on an individual basis and determine is, is the approach the cause of it? Was the approach put in properly? Did they get a permit? And we'll basically narrow it down to whether or not the county is responsible or not. So, laid out all the conditions. Driveway pipes, same, same thing. If, if, since the ditch is part of the drainage system of the road, the pipe is the responsibility of the county to replace if it needs to be replaced. Now, if they have a concrete driver, driveway on top of that, and it was put in without a permit, then if we come in and have to replace the pipe, the property owner would have to do the concrete on top. Now, if they did get a permit, and we inspected it and gave them the okay, and the pipe fails, then we would replace the concrete driveway part on top of that. So, there's a lot of information in here, and I know it was kinda, Chris has been working with us from the get-go on it, so he's well-versed in it. But Sam and Jeff, you guys probably haven't had time to really look at it and delve into it much, and I didn't wanna put you on the spot today and, and ask that this be approved today. So, it's up to you. You know, if we wanna prove it today, great. If you guys are good with it, great. If we wanna wait till next week, that's fine with me, too.
I browsed through it last night. I only fell asleep twice.
Yeah.
I guess, yeah, I guess the only thing is, the, the permit, this is mainly dealing with somebody just redoing their driveway or something. But if you're new construction, you're gonna be getting this permit with construction permit at the same time anyway, right?
Even if they redo the driveway, they're supposed to get a permit.
Right. And that's dealing, this is supposedly dealing more with that, where we've had issues about who's responsible for it, and what circumstance.
Out in some big, if we go out to repair a driveway, it may have drainage issues, you know, it wasn't, you know, it was cracked up, it's causing issues, water's getting under the pavement. We go out to fix that, well, all of a sudden, now we got the neighbor next to them, so, well, my driveway's cracked, too. We don't, we didn't have any basis to say, no, it's, we're not gonna do it. If you wanna do it, you can do it. And that's what the policy more is, is give us some... Owner, which tree was that one we got on? Didn't seem like we could ever get off of a couple years ago. Because it just went from one driveway to the other, so... Well, if there's, if it's just cosmetic, if it's drainage, they don't like it, you know, that's up to them, they won't replace it. If it's bumping on our part, you know, as far as the water stays there, it's not, the water's not going underneath the pavement, you know, that's up to them.
Or if they just bought a lowrider and it drags, it's up to them to fix it.
Exactly. Exactly.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm fine with approving it.
Yeah, I am, too.
I didn't see anything there last night.
It spells out.
It was just, we were spending a lot of time, not, not so much money-wise for concrete, but it was just taking a lot of time to take out the gutter and the approach. I mean, it, it'd take three guys a couple days to do one, so...
We were getting requests, you know, you may have a small area where it's got chipped, you know, there's snowplow there if they wanted to replace, because it didn't look good. You know, it's still, in our opinion, it still functions the way it needs to be. But, you know, if they want it to look nice, then let it up to land or rebuild it.
I mean, I, I worked with Eric on it, but, I mean, the Road and Bridge Advisory Board all looked at it, and we made some modifications to it, and made some changes. And obviously, it's, it's probably not perfect, but, you know, like...
Well, this gives them something to go on. If somebody doesn't like it, they can always come up to us, and we can revisit it. And, I mean, I'm sure you didn't write this all yourself. There's probably some policy that this mirrors, or... No?
We, I did talk to Jefferson City to see what they did. They do a little, little similar to this. They, they won't go and replace the driveway just for cosmetic reasons. They will waive a permit fee if somebody wants to replace their driveway approach. So, I don't have that specifically.
But that's what I mean, you had something this guy.
Yeah, I didn't just make it up, yeah. But it was, from what I started with to what I ended up with, there's a lot more conditions out there that came up as we were going through this to add in here. But, like Chris said, it's not gonna be perfect. There may be things we need to add in later as we go, but we needed at least a starting point. So, we could at least get something enacted so our crews can start this summer going with this policy and not be mired down in trying to replace driveways. Because like Chris said, it does, it takes a lot of our time, and we really need to be spending it on replacing street panels and whatnot, deficient curb, and not on just people's individual drive approaches.
With any of our policy, it's living document, you know, we find something that we didn't really think of or address, we can come back to modify the policy.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I think it's good.
It does include a reference to, it does include a reference at the end to Jefferson City standards for drive approaches, so, which is what we're using on our Stormwater and Subdivision three repelling projects. So, we have that as part of the contract.
Okay.
I have one copy.
Sam's got a copy there, too.
I got a copy, too.
You got a better copy here?
This, this one, I guess you would just sign the one. I don't know, I've never been one of these, but. And then, we would have to have Don Hill as the chairman of the Road and Bridge Advisory Committee, he would sign it as well. And then, it's a testimony by the.
Can you take out double space somewhere so you can get a hold on that last page where Steve tested?
Yeah, don't make it that, I'll fix it.
All right.
Yeah, that's.
Very good.
I move that we approve and sign the Cole County Drive Approach and Pipe Policy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval and signing of independent contractor agreement for Public Works.
This is, as I mentioned last week, we're gonna hire Tom Kleagle back as a, as an independent contractor to help us out this summer with some inspection on one of our projects, and maybe a second, if we have some money left available. And it's just a simple agreement with him. Chris, you had asked a question about insurance and liability and whatnot, and there is a line in here for workers' compensation, that we will not have that provided for him. And then, I talked with Jill about it, and we think this is okay, and we think we're addressing that issue. And the rate of pay would be forty dollars per hour, and then mileage would be reimbursed from a distance, starting at Cole County Public Works to the job site and back. And he would use his own vehicle.
So, we're talking about work comp, and I don't wanna be difficult here, but, I mean, is he gonna carry some type of liability policy for him, or, I mean, I just, and then, on the work comp, I know with my work comp, if I engage an independent contractor and they don't have work comp or some policy, I have to pay it. So, in essence, if he's an independent contractor working under us, Debbie, you can, are you paying attention?
Yes.
If he's an independent contractor working for the county and he does not have work comp insurance, we have to pick up that cost on him. So, I mean, I'm okay with doing that, and paying the work comp for him, but I guess I'm not so much concerned about the work comp as I am the liability of him being on a construction site. I mean, you know, don't, I mean, I, I don't think anything's gonna happen with Tom. I mean, I really don't, but you never know when he's working by an excavator and a hose bus, and the thing comes flying around and hits somebody.
Again, this first I was done with.
So.
I have to relay it to Debbie or Jill, I'm not, I said this.
Well, we've already talked, you know, that would be a work comp, getting hurt on, on, for instance, if you were a regular employee and that's hurt, then that would be workers' comp. So.
Okay. I can see that. I mean, you know, I mean, obviously, somebody getting hurt, I mean, somebody could die, I mean.
Yeah, as far as like, other liability, we've always got premises liability. We've got premises liability here.
He's not gonna be on our premises. He's gonna be on other premises. He's gonna be on a public road, or.
Well, then that's a public roads problem.
I guess the public roads are our roads.
That would be our roads.
I was gonna say, it'd be our road.
Okay, well, I mean, I just, I just, you know, little concerned there, because normally, if we engage an engineer or something, they would have their own people, their own insurance, all their own liability.
I did look at, when we do a supplemental agreement with an engineering company to do inspection, which we do, the original contract, it doesn't have anything about liability insurance, but it does have something about holding us harmless or something. There's some line about that, and I don't.
This, this was patterned after the agreement that the Health Department uses with their independent contractors, and it's their standard agreement.
But Chris is right. When they do come and audit us for the workers' comp, they take any of them that I have ten ninety-nine, and they include that in our premium, so.
If he's got his own LLC or something, he can sign something saying he's rejecting our coverage if he's self-employed, but.
Still doesn't hold us not liable for the work comp.
If, if you sign it for the work comp, you can, if you're self-employed, because you're not required to have work comp on yourself. So, you can sign some form for that. But I don't know if he's gotta have an LLC for that or not.
That would prevent him from getting a ten ninety-nine, so, that's probably how.
Most of them. So, you're W two.
No.
So, if you don't W two, then you ten ninety-nine.
Tom's not, like, said.
If he's self-employed.
If he's self-employed and it's an individual, then I'm gonna ten ninety-nine.
Right. And even if he signs a form saying that I'm rejecting your work comp coverage, he's taking care of himself. We got like, because he's not required to have work comp on himself. I'm not required to on myself. I can go pay for it, it doesn't cover me anyway.
Right, but, but if you're a contractor hiring a subcontractor, and your sub cannot provide you with proof of work comp, and even general liability, in my case, you pay it.
Yeah, I'm just gonna talk about work comp at this point.
Right. But, I mean, you're, you're, you're responsible for anybody working underneath you as a general contractor or a public body or whatever, so on the work comp, you can't, I mean, you can't get out of it. I mean, when they audit you, they're gonna, they're gonna make you pay for it.
Is Illinois different, then?
I don't know, but I know what you're saying. I mean, obviously, owners and.
There could be differences out there in Illinois, so there isn't required to do it.
And I, I'm okay with this. I think, I think the work.
So, how do we get around that for the Health Department, independent contractors?
We don't.
We don't. We pay it.
We pay it?
Based on, yeah, with your ten ninety-nine.
Okay, I did that.
I mean, so technically, they're covered under our work comp. I mean.
Tom's, Tom's not in this for the business. He's more listening to us favor this summer, and he's coming back to help get this one box covered filled. So, we don't have the staff to be able to do it.
No, I get it. This just has nothing to do with Tom.
No.
I'm just making sure that.
And I'm not sure M E M wouldn't try to go back and segregate and try to get something out of the individual, but, so I'm just gonna put that out there.
Kristen, you asked a question, how do we come up with the rate?
Yeah, is that similar to what we would pay an outside person to come in and do the same?
If we had to go through an engineering consultant, it'd be a lot more. Tom, I took what his hourly plus benefits was when he retired, and just assumed an amount, just kinda negotiated the amount that he was, he was fine with, so.
Okay.
That's how we got to that.
You guys good?
Yep.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the indepenter, independent contractor agreement with Tom Kleagle.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, it's.
I wouldn't have thought of that.
I've, I've been through somebody audited, ain't even funny. Every year. And I fight with them. I feel your, I feel your pain, Debbie. I can only imagine.
Okay.
I just love it when they call.
Okay. Anything else to come before us today?
To become a forest?
Yeah, we're gonna plant trees. Oh, speaking of that, the V A R does, are we gonna do some landscaping so they can plant a tree?
Yes, we are. Let me get ahold of C M P S about doing something there. Trying to get that going. Did you guys get that stuff patched over there yet, or still working on that?
This week, we're trying to.
Okay. We had that person that fell over there, and I asked Larry and Larry to try to get that fixed, so that.
We're just gonna, we're temporary fixes.
Right.
Yeah.
Temporary patch to just keep people from falling. There was a couple things that I had seen on the.
I'm checking some emails. I know we had some things, we had a bunch of stuff going back to the office inside. Yeah, I think they need to, well, I'm done with it. I think they have to get their chair to sign it or something.
Yeah, I need to make a copy, then I'll give the original to Eric.
Okay.
Okay, so we, so we had these pay forms that came through, and we're talking to Debbie a little bit. And so, obviously, we had, Jerry, I think you had sent something by email about lieutenants and captains and different things, and so, obviously, there was a pay difference from a paramedic to a lieutenant, and then from a paramedic to a captain. And the question was, is what's the difference between a lieutenant and a captain? And so, anyway.
So, I sent two pay forms. One doesn't matter, because it's paramedic to captain, so that's clear. But we've never had this come up before, where.
Right.
They've moved up the ladder.
Right.
So, I went ahead and submitted it. We can change it, if you wanna change it.
Well, I just wanted, I mean, I don't know that we were ever clear about it, and and obviously, there was a difference and more responsibility there, and so, it was, so, paramedic to captain was a seventy-five cent increase. Paramedic to lieutenant was a fifty cent increase. And so, is from lieutenant to captain, is that another seventy-five, or is that a quarter?
That's the question.
It's only in the budget currently as a quarter, so we budgeted those increases in there for each position. So, there's only seventy-five cents for each captive physician.
Right.
There's not an additional on top of moving from one to the other.
So, I just, I remember the conversation, but we just never really said, well, from this level to this level was how much, so. I mean, it seems, it seems to make more sense that it's a twenty-five cent increase than it is a seventy-five from lieutenant to captain, but, but that's just kinda my take on it.
Seems logical to me, too, but.
Well, that's why I bring it up.
That's what my understanding would have been.
Okay. So, there's one that you'll need to change, and I'll, we can, if you guys got it, I can do it today.
Okay, we can just make a note on here.
Okay.
Whatever, and just initial the changes.
And I'll put it on the master, so we don't hold on for long.
I thought I had something else, but I can't find it.
Yeah, I don't know. I thought there were several things, but we stalled long enough, I guess.
Okay.
Now, if you got something else. I had a bunch of emails. We've had a bunch of stuff going back and forth, so.
We, we don't need to make a decision on Jerry's, on Matt's thing? Get that on the agenda?
Well, it weren't per policy, is what he offered was gonna be.
Yeah.
Oh, was it? Okay. We made a decision on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're working on our United Way team, too, so.
Who is?
Well, Chris, Kristen.
County, county's team, or?
Yes, the county's team. Yes. You wanna, you wanna be co-chair with Ralph?
Oh, I gotta get my fingernails painted or something.
So, did you guys get ahold of Kehoe, or anybody about that legislation on the per diem?
No, I did not. I was hoping Mac was doing that. John, so Mac hasn't really been working with the Sheriff's Association, or what's, because I would, talking to Dick Burke, they were really disappointed in all that stuff, and I think they were really, the per diem.
No, I, I don't know if they are or not. We tried to let them know about it. I don't know if they've made any contact with any legislators. I'm going up there right now.
I'd say all of them have been, but I know we had letters coming out telling us to get ahold of them, too.
Oh, good, good.
I'm pretty sure.
We need, we need to, because they're, they're, I think the thought process is, and the direction they're going is to take away all that.
So, then where are they gonna put their prisoners if they don't have somebody they're paying to keep them?
By state statute, we have to put them in prison.
But we can release them on pre-trial, right?
I'm sorry?
We can release them on pre-trial, right?
Perhaps.
Right in the Capitol Building?
Perhaps.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's, it's gonna be, you're gonna, what's gonna happen is, you're gonna start seeing, some of the smaller jails are gonna shut down, because they can't, they won't be able to afford it. We're lucky, in the sense that we're big enough that we're able to absorb some. I think right now, they only owe us a hundred, I would say it was a hundred eighty-seven thousand. I can't remember exactly. But, like, Green County, which is a lot bigger than us, they owe them like one point two million.
Yeah, but you also got to realize that Green County has been behind on some of their, submitting some of their information, too, so.
And that, that may be so. I don't know yet.
I mean, it's, part of it's their own fault.
You know, I will tell you that Department of Corrections Director Preside has been outstanding, and as soon as she gets money put in that account, she sends it out, so it, it's, she's been doing what she possibly can, so it is, it is not Department of Corrections, it is legislature.
Well, yeah, in her defense, it just goes through her.
That's right, she's passed.
But the state legislature needs to pay for what is owed and get it caught up, and just kinda start at zero again. So, that's part of where the problem is. They're, they've been behind for a long time. They need to make it whole, so. But they sure don't need to be taking anything away from it, because even the pre-trial release, they're only gonna offer, I think, what, twelve dollars?
I don't think they're gonna offer anything for pre-trial release.
There was something in there about.
The legislation had that.
For a shackle.
Nonviolent offenders.
They would pay for some type of leg shackle, up to twelve dollars a day, but who knows?
I don't think it was twelve dollars a day, was it?
Yeah, it was.
We can, we can bill them, but that, that means you're gonna pay.
Right.
Well, the problem with that, too, is there's no definition of nonviolent offender in the criminal code.
I'm not violent till you piss me off. So, yeah, we got all kinds of definitions.
Well, the criminal code has specific definitions. They've got a definition of dangerous felonies, which applies in certain ways, but nonviolent offender is open to whatever interpretation.
Right, and that's probably why, because there are some that say that drug crimes are nonviolent, and that is absolutely incorrect. Their biggest crime, that is absolutely incorrect.
Okay, I don't think I have anything else.
Yeah, I think that was it, too. That came down the line.
Okay, I move that we stand in recess till four thirty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gosh, no close session.
Hey, John, what's, if I wanna check my.